Bruce, you must have something really good, too.
Of course I do. It's Bruce Danielson, and I guess I'm here to entertain you, too.
Call the meeting to order. Now call to order the joint meeting of the City Council and the Lincoln County Commissioners this 22nd day of February. We'll go ahead and start with roll. We do have a quorum of Lincoln County Commissioners here, that being Commissioner Gibbon, Commissioner Schmidt, myself, and I believe Commissioner Aaron's is on air. Is he with us? Oh, and there's Commissioner Poppins down there. So we definitely have a quorum. All right, we can hear you all.
Could I get a roll call for the city, please?
Councilmembers Breckie, here. Erickson? Jensen? Kylie?
Here.
Knightzert?
Here.
Selberg?
Here.
Sale?
Here.
Starr?
We have a quorum.
All right, would everyone join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ask for a motion to approve the agenda.
Still moving, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Unopposed, same sign. Motion carries. The agenda is approved on the county side.
Could I get a motion from the City Council to approve the regular agenda?
Move approval, Jensen.
Second, Breckie.
Moved by Jensen, second by Breckie. Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmembers Breckie? Yes. Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Knightzert?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
The motion's approved.
Thank you. Move on to the regular agenda. Can the clerk please read item one into the record?
Item one is a second reading deferred from the meeting of Tuesday, January 25th, 2022. An ordinance of the City of Sioux Falls, South Dakota amending the revised joint zoning ordinance for Lincoln County and the City of Sioux Falls by rezoning property legally described as west one-half, northeast one-fourth, XS 247.5 feet and west 24.75 feet thereof. Section 22 T 100 NR 49W, Lincoln County, South Dakota, from the A1 Agricultural District to the RR Rural Residential District. The Sioux Falls Planning Commission vote to recommend approval failed zero to seven. The Lincoln County Commission vote to recommend approval failed zero to four. Private applicants, JSA Consulting Engineers, land surveyors, John Decence.
Thank you. Is there a representative, the applicant here in the audience today? Sir, do you want to come up to the microphone, state your name and address?
My name is Tom Winker out of 308 West Lotta Street in Sioux Falls. I'm the applicant, owner, and developer. I've been doing the real estate and home building for 25-plus years in Sioux Falls. The area that we've got in question here that I'm asking for the rezoning on is an area I've researched quite a bit. I've got some visuals that I'm going to put on the headline here for you, if she can turn it on for me.
It's on.
Okay, sorry. The first one he's going to put up is a GIS map that shows a two-mile radius of, from the center of this land. In that two-mile radius, 19 different residential developments. Just that right here. So in that two-mile radius, there's 19. Some were approved after the rural residential development designation came in, and some were before. The ones I believe with the rural residential are yellow. The ones that were prior to are not highlighted in yellow. There's been two previous developments approved out in this area out of the 19. If you draw a line between Bridges over Spring Creek, or Bridges at Spring Creek, that was approved in late 19 or early 20, and Brandu, which was approved late last year, the line dissects my property almost in half in the same line. The demand that our region is seeing for this type of property has outpaced the supply by a long shot. In the past 26 months, we've had 50 parcels in that quadrant of our city between interstate and the border south of Sioux Falls. Out of those 50 that were listed, 44 are sold, two are pending. There's only four left that are active. The demand is out there. The supply is very short. And the supply is just not there. The demand we're seeing is unprecedented for our area. Now, I've talked to Lincoln County Rural Water, Southeastern Electric, and Springdale Township. They've all been contacted. They've all stated that they can service this area readily. The only concern with the township director that I talked to was making sure they see the plans for proper sizing of culverts and road entrance. We've spent a lot of time, more than I'm told that most of the guys do when they ask for this designation, engineering it prior to putting in the application. Springdale Township is known for a high water table, which leads to extra care taken in the building. We've averaged on our 72 acres, 2.8 acres per building site, which is almost three times what's required for a septic system. In the building of the homes, I've decided the covenants would dictate that there's no full deep basements. They'd be three feet below the, 30 inches below the street level at the most for the lowest level. The streets have all been designed to meet the city guidelines because we're in the three-mile zone and as well as the drainage, and the engineer will speak on the drainage in a few moments here. The drainage is a big issue, though, for some of the neighbors. And as the engineer will show, the drainage will be improved from what they currently have on bare farm fields. The, like I said, the covenants, we're going to look for a 1,700 square foot plus home in dollars that would relate to about $700,000 plus, which would multiply with the 25 lots, 15 to 20-plus million dollars worth of taxable value. We would do a road district for the road, which would be paved. We would also then have a homeowners association if the streetlights were required or wanted. We would put in streetlights with the homeowners association. Tried to address all the affected neighbors and landowners, the objections they've had. Mostly, it was the drainage. They will speak later, I assume, here. But the drainage, the engineer will cover pretty in-depth. There is one neighbor directly to the east, built his home about four years ago, I understand, on three acres. And I think what I'm trying to provide for about 25 other homeowners is the same opportunity he had to build out and have space. Not quite the rural residential we're seeing with the one-acre parcels that you see popping up all over, but with two to three acres plus per size, spread them out a little farther. In summary, the development is meant to supply some of the growth and demand that we're seeing. I have a couple of emails that are in your packets from, one from the Aggie family on their Brandu development. They've seen demand for about half of their lots already, and they haven't even finished or started advertising. The Bridges at Spring Creek, she sold out her eight lots in a matter of one year. And I know of at least two homes that are started in that development. I hope, if we can get this approved, that this development would look as well and beautiful to some of the other developments that are 20, 30, 40 years old out there. But whether we're approved or not, I think the demand is going to dictate that we see this kind of proposal come up all around the city, some in Lincoln County, some in Minnehaha. It's just a demand and a product that is needed. I've got a couple more visuals for you on the screens. The next one will show approximately where the land is and where Veterans Parkway is being built. Only the piece that came off the city site didn't stretch out to the east far enough, so it's about one and a half miles off the X on your visual there. The next visual is the 2040 future land use. And in the bottom right corner, I have the three in my handwriting, the three developments pictured there. And as you'll see on the, then the next page, if you draw a straight line through those, again, it dissects my land. And that straight line runs about parallel to the tier-three zone that the city has established, meaning they won't be able to provide services for at least 26 years, is my understanding. And I've heard estimates farther out than that, if they ever go that direction. Then the two emails, you guys have those? Do you want to see them on the screen? Of the Aggie?
We do have them in our record. If you, I mean, if you want to refer to them, go ahead. We do have them.
I wasn't going to, but if you wanted to. So that's all from me. Thank you.
Thank you. Just wondering if somebody planning and zoning wants to speak to the application. You just come on up and state your name, please?
Good evening. I'm Fletcher LaCock, urban planner with City Sioux Falls. Typically, we'd have Toby Brown up here, but he's at the Lincoln County Planning Commission meeting tonight, and he asked me to come and do the presentation for you. So what we have is a request, a rezoning request from agricultural district to rural residential southeast of the city, approximately 1.55 miles, and it's located outside the tier-three growth boundary for the city. So that means urban services will not be available to this property beyond 25, 26 years. What the applicant is proposing, in addition to rezoning, is submit a preliminary subdivision plan to create 25 residential lots on this subject property. It's currently zoned agricultural district and is used for farming. Surrounding properties are also zoned agricultural, and there is no residential development budding the property, other than the one house to the east. Where we see other developments that the applicant brought up, the Kathy Kruger development, Bridges at Spring Creek Edition, and Brandu Acres to the northeast, these were both adjacent to existing residential development. So we have a conflict of land use with this one where we didn't with the other two applications. Here, we have a layout of the proposed development. You know, as we go through, Toby identified in the project or staff report that it's inconsistent with the adopted comprehensive plan, which recommends keeping rural areas outside the service boundaries rural, preventing leapfrog development, which causes land use issues and conflicts. And then these types of residential development puts pressure on county services. So the police department, or the sheriff's department, emergency services, drainage, all those other things that, you know, we don't think about, it's adding pressure to that, including road maintenance and snow removal. So what we, to sum up, you know, City Sioux Falls has issues with this being outside our tier growth areas, the intent of the growth boundary and the comprehensive plan to preserve rural land for future, future urban development and keeping and protecting rural areas. Lincoln County, additional burden on rural services, and the need to preserve agricultural land. At the joint planning commission meeting, there were some neighbors, and they're here also tonight, who came in in opposition, including issues with access drainage and the conflicting land use, leapfrog development, and the recommendation of the Lincoln County Planning Commission and Sioux Falls Planning Commission is to deny the rezoning request and the associated preliminary subdivision plan. So with that, you know, we're staff with any questions that you may have, so.
Thank you.
I do have a question, if I may.
Sure, that's what I was wondering. We want to, does anybody have any questions for staff right now?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm just curious, if a planned development like this was approved, who out of the staff would go inspect, verify, or enforce to make sure that the plans are met?
Currently, there would be requirements for a rural subdivision, but our, the city public works department would not go out and inspect.
So nobody?
If those require, if the city requirements were in place.
I just wanted to verify, because that's what I believe, that there was nobody to actually do any of those inspect, enforce, or verify.
Yes, I believe that is accurate.
Does anybody else have questions for staff? Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. One of the questions that I had, and I think this is the main reason why this is probably here in front of us, is even though those other developments were adjacent to residential, rural residential areas already, they were still leapfrogging. As a matter of what you've said here tonight, they were putting more burden on Lincoln County. They're putting more burden on X, Y, and Z. So why did you, or why did the city not decide on those ones to say that that was a problem, and this one is a problem, only because it wasn't adjacent to other properties? Can you give me a little historical knowledge on why that's the case? Because I think those were probably a mistake, if you're looking at what you guys have already kind of outlined. And by allowing them, that's where I think the applicant is probably questioning, well, what's going on here?
Based on review of the staff recommendations for those previous applications, it indicated that support was due to the proposed developments not having as big an impact on adjacent land uses because they were already developed with residential subdivisions. That's, yeah, and would have less of a negative impact on those services, because they're already being, using those county services in those areas. So they're not having to add additional services to new areas.
Thank you. Anyone else on the board? All right, if not, I'm going to ask anybody who is in favor of this project, if you'd like to come up and make any comment you'd like to make. Sure, go ahead. Just state your name and address, please.
Good evening. My name's Pat Schwab with JSA Engineers. I'm the engineer for Tom for this subdivision, and talk briefly about the drainage. Could you turn on the overhead, please? This is a topographic map showing the existing topography of the property. The north is at the left-hand side by his finger. That's the high side of the property. It drains to the south. Drainage currently flows, we believe, almost entirely on this subject property from north to south, staying within the fence lines. And it discharges at the southeast and the southwest corners of the property, where you'll see those Vs. Tom's told me that the current use of, the historical use of the property has been row crops. Now he's put up a proposed grading plan for the subdivision in the southwest and southeast corners of the property. Those concentrated contour lines depict, it's probably obvious, detention ponds. And so the property would be developed to continue to drain north to south. And then before it leaves the property, it would also, the drainage was also flowing to these detention ponds for stormwater quantity and quality treatment. With the development of this property into rural residential lots, two and a half acres plus on average, there'll be less runoff off of that property than there is currently off of row crops. I've been challenged by that a time or two by county staff, and the science says, you can look at the Soil Conservation Service TR-55 manual, and the runoff is higher off of a row crop dirt field than it is off of bluegrass, off of somebody's lawn. It almost seems like common sense. So the runoff will be at a lower rate than it is now. It'll flow to the same discharge points as it does now. What else can I tell you? Tom wanted me to point out, that is my summary of the drainage. Tom wanted me to point out something he forgot to mention, paving of the road, the access to the development. If that is necessary, Tom is able to and prepared to pave that existing gravel road. And then I understand there's concern about the detention ponds and the drainage following a rain event, a major rain event, and what happens if the detention ponds are full? Well, then the water's going to run off of the rest of the property. It had a much slower rate through the bluegrass, through somebody's yard, than it does now barreling down a dirt row crop that's packed down. And it's going to run through the pond and out to discharge points like it currently does, but it's still going to have the benefit of running through a detention pond purse. That detention pond probably discharged some of its water since it was full. So it's still going to be a better situation. That's all I have.
Thank you, sir.
I have a question, Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
Pat, you indicated that the runoff would be faster. And my question is, if I put how many, 25 or something rooftops up there, I don't understand how rooftops don't absorb, they run off, that there would be more water to handle in a rain event than there would be if it's just agricultural. Can you help me there?
Yeah.
Commissioner Schmacken, could you speak into your microphone? Thank you.
Excuse me, Madam Chair.
You bet. And I think the answer is purely proportionally. The rooftops certainly are impervious, and you'll get more runoff off of them. But the rest of the property on a 2.8-acre site is going to absorb more water and slow down the water more than in a cornfield. And so the increase off of the structure is not as, of runoff is not as great as the decrease from the, from the other surface, the grass. Does that make sense to you?
Well, I'm thinking if you've got driveways that are going to be concrete, if you've got streets that are going to be asphalt, all of those don't absorb any water, and the runoff, in my mind, would be greater than if it was just an agricultural land that just absorbed it. But I'm no engineer, sir.
Well, I, in preparation for this, I, I did, let me pull up here. So what determines the amount of runoff off of a field or a lawn is what we call the CN number. And so if the CN number is higher, you're going to get more runoff off of it. And if it's lower, you're going to get less. And so the CN numbers are based on the size of the properties. So in Sioux Falls, in a small, normal residential, single-family residential lot, if it's a third of an acre, your runoff, your CN number's going to, I'm not prepared for this, it's going to be like 76. That's the number. Off of a, when the lots get larger, you got more grass. The house stays about the same, but the grass gets larger. The CN number goes down. Now it's a CN, or 68. And these are the numbers that are plugged into the equation to tell you how much runoff you're going to have. You get up to a two-acre lot, CN is 65. And off of a row crop, the CN number's a 78. So it's much higher. I know it's hard to believe, but if you think about it, you know, tilled-up farm field is going to absorb a lot of water, but after a certain amount of time, that dirt gets packed in, and then the water just runs. And that's the difference.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else here to speak in favor of the project?
Madam Chair?
Yeah, go ahead.
I ask a question of the applicant, please. In your presentation, sir, you referenced two miles to other developments. In your presentation, you referenced a two-mile radius for other developments?
Yes.
Why is two miles significant?
An arbitrary number in talking with Toby Brown.
Okay, thank you.
Just an arbitrary number, and, you know, farther south, there's more. Farther north, you're in the city.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to speak in favor of the application? If not, is there anyone that would like to speak opposed to the application? Come on up. Just state your name and address, and you're going to have some lights in front of you that are going to tell you when you're out of time.
My name is Randy Olson. I live, I own the property to the south of where he wants to develop it, and then I own about a 25-foot strip all along the west side of it. That's my right-of-way from the north into my property. And this stuff about less runoff, I'm having a hard time believing it, because when I first moved out there, the creek that runs from one place would go dry during the summer. With all the development to the south and west of me, that creek runs year-round better than it used to run on the good times. So that's a little hard to believe. All this water's going to drain through my pasture that I got there down two different draws. Whether he puts retention ponds in or not, they're going to fill up, and it's going to run through me. And I've got enough water running through me. I think if they're going to drain it on me, they need to put a tile all the way to the creek, which would be about a quarter of a mile through a draw, which would be tough. So I just don't want any more water running on me. And trying to, if they put development there, the fence, the way it is now, I fix my right half when I, the right half when I stand on my property, and my neighbor fixes the right half when he stands on his property. He put five, six houses along there. People that live in town, I got to fix the whole, whole fence. And if they get out, it's my problem. So I've got enough development going on around me. I think your planning commission is right, where they, let's work out from Sioux Falls. It's coming eventually. There's no stopping it, but let's hold it off for a while. And the roads and streets are all going to run more water. It's going to be coming down pretty good. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to speak in opposition to the application?
I'm Mark Johnson, 1147 898 269th Street. I've been farming the property for several years. My concern is, these guys' retention ponds are right on top of drain tile, which will affect other neighbor farms. The other thing is, he brought up asphalt in that road. I haul quite a bit of crop. I've got 500 acres there right off of that road, and all that crop has to go to can, and it will be going across that blacktop. So that road should be brought up to county specs, because it will have heavy truck traffic from all of the neighbors in the area. And also, I'd like to mention who's going to take care of the garbage from these developments, as in the stuff blowing around in the fields, the plastic and the tar paper, and all the dervish that comes along with the development. That's all I got.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else like to come up and speak in opposition?
Darwin Elbers, 2697 4480th Avenue. I own the property directly to the east of what he wants to develop there. And I think this water thing, I just. And I think this water thing, I just, I'm not an engineer, but I don't, can't even hardly believe there's going to be less runoff with the development. And you know, I farm up against a couple of developments and they're flat and they literally got a sump hose under the fence in my field because they got to get rid of the water. And I about guarantee you, as flat as that ground is, they're going to have to build that up and I think there's going to be a lot of water problems. And as far as that street goes, Mark brought up a good point, we haul a lot of grain down that road. And if he puts asphalt in there, I about guarantee it's going to be not thick enough and it's going to break up right away. And yeah, that's all I got.
Thank you. Anybody else in the audience like to come up and speak in opposition? All right, entertaining discussion or statements from the joint members? Go ahead.
I do have a handful of questions that would be directed at staff. It's too bad Toby's not here, but maybe somebody, whether it's my colleagues here or somebody that needs to chime in as it relates to some more county centric things. When we're thinking about rural subdivisions, I know just enough about county zoning to be dangerous and I guess it's my understanding that first and foremost agriculture is to be protected. That's what the county is. And so if you start doing things that are more urban, you can run into those conflicts, of course, where somebody might build a house and say, well, I don't like the smell, but it's the country. I mean, you're supposed to have agriculture and stuff like that. So what is, what is the attitude or the policy that we're supposed to be trying to follow as it relates to approving residential subdivisions in the county?
So, I mean, we have the joint jurisdiction area with Lincoln County as well as Minnehaha County, and that's to not just manage growth around, you know, as the city grows, but it's to, you know, identify where growth should be happening. And so one of the things we have are the city's tier maps identifying where we have urban services. So when you get a development with 25 plus houses going in, there need to be services in place in order to serve those new people coming in. And, you know, in an area that's outside even our, the city's tiers, it's going to be over 25 years before urban services get there. And even if they do get there, that land will probably never be in the city of Sioux Falls and will always just be in Lincoln County because it's already going to be developed and there'll be no incentive to annex into the city. We see pockets like that throughout the city of Sioux Falls. So it's working together to identify areas where development should happen, but also protecting areas that are agricultural and being used as agricultural land and protecting it in the county, as well as protecting area land for future growth of the city, you know, 25, 30 years down the line, when services will eventually, you know, potentially get out there, so.
Okay. Is it more, should it be more of a concern if the proposal is surrounded by purely agricultural land that's being farmed versus adjacent to already residential subdivisions because of potential land use conflicts of the things I was talking about? Or?
I believe that is one of the things that we do look at is the conflict of land uses. You know, as these gentlemen who have come here tonight and come to multiple meetings now have mentioned, you know, there are those, you know, the issues with the road, with drainage, with, you know, you get houses in there and suddenly there are complaints about the smells and everything else. So just working to ensure that everybody's property rights are protected.
Is there a future land use designation for land this far out? Or do we?
I believe in the comprehensive plan that's identified as residential, so the proposed land use is consistent, however, so far out that the comprehensive plan actually says, don't develop this, keep it rural.
And then maybe finally, from a purely city perspective, is our big concern about if we have development getting ahead of annexation that we end up with more, like we have around town, pockets that have no incentive to annex because they're already living just fine? And so why do I want to pay and upgrade my services and have to change out my, you know, get city sewer when I already had, you know, septic and all that and bring roads to standard?
And that is one of the concerns, yes. Not the primary concern, but one of the issues that comes up.
Is it possible that some of these other rural subdivisions are, were prior to things like, such as joint jurisdictional zoning and some historical things that they got there first and that's why they're there, but this one is running into problems?
Yeah, I mean, before, you know, the current zoning ordinance and comprehensive plan, development did happen. There's also, there are building eligibility's and so there are ways for property owners to combine building eligibility's and develop smaller pockets, but that's protecting land that would otherwise be developed. So in those cases, there's a trade off, but it does protect some land. Whereas this one, we're rezoning, you know, there are no building eligibility's which everyone else has to potentially collect and, you know, combine. So there's that difference.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Questions, comments?
Madam Chair, Councilman Jensen, you asked a good question about how these, how these particular developments were approved. The Kruger addition really had very little land impact. It was not agricultural at all. It was built along a creek. So all of those, and I think there were six lots, six or eight lots. So there was no ag related anything. It was just a very picturesque thing. And we did have houses that were on, I think on both sides, and we really had no objections from any of the neighbors. So that was relatively easy, you know, on that one. So in answer to that question, which was good.
Anybody else have questions or comments they'd like to make? Sure, go ahead.
Just a quick comment and thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you for the history. I appreciate it. And, you know, how I vote tonight will be kind of dictated by some of the city staff that I talked to earlier today. And the problem with approving a rural subdivision like this is we basically leapfrog all of the land that's in between the city and this property for the proper planning. One of the terms that was used by city staff today to me was that it's unmanaged growth. And that's where I really, because I've been back and forth on this because the applicant makes some really good points in that these other rural subdivisions were approved, although some of the story known, some of the story unknown, they still leapfrogged the process. So I would just have the, you know, everyone that's in this area to understand that, you know, at least from my perspective, unmanaged growth is not going to be able to be sustainable, especially for the city in many years from now. And I think that was the number one issue that city staff had is unmanaged growth. So where I come in at it is if we're going to continue to have managed growth and be able to, you know, plan for the future, this probably doesn't fit in our, in our conversation today, and that's why I'm going to vote against it. So that's just where I fall on it today and wish the applicant the best.
Thank you. Questions or comments?
I think that's a very good point from a city perspective. I guess I'm still curious from those on the county side, you know, the way that they look at it. Because you can make an argument, well, it's more property tax revenue potentially, but maybe their, and I'd be curious if anybody chimes in, because I think the city perspective and why we would potentially vote against it is clear for me because that's just my wheelhouse. But from the county perspective, I don't know if it's maybe the preserving agriculture or city services or having to provide services, whether it be, you know, the sheriffs and things like that. So that would be just an interesting perspective because we do have two bodies and just curious.
Well, and I'll just, from my perspective and looking at it, I would agree, it doesn't fit the land use map right now that we have for Lincoln County. And I guess in Lincoln County, we call it spot zoning and that's what this looks like to me. It's out of place with the surroundings. That's what's going to determine my vote tonight. Other commissioners can speak for themselves on that, but that's where I'm coming from.
Well, Madam Chair, we had two bodies of private citizens that vetted this and looked at it and I'm sure heard the same testimony that we heard tonight. And in a collective way, they received a unanimous approval to turn this down. So I look at those individuals because they are appointed, we asked them to do the heavy lifting and to do the work, and I honor their findings.
Thank you. Other comments, questions? Commissioner Gibbon, did you want to say anything?
I guess I concur with Commissioner Schmidt. I think that it's a good plan, but we're not there yet and it is some leapfrogging and unmanageable growth at this particular time.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Yeah, I think, coming in late after all those comments, I think they all kind of hit it on the head with it doesn't fit the current land use map and kind of how things are set up at the time. But I did want to kind of tell Mr. Winker, who was kind enough to reach out a couple of times, and I appreciate that you did get this material together for everybody and reached out. We talked a few times as we went about that. So I know these things get a little bit frustrating a bit, but I appreciate the work that you Yeah, I would, I will probably be voting against it as well for a number of the reasons, but it's been a good discussion. It's another one of those topics, especially with land use zoning and everything else where I learned a bunch, and this is one of those as well. So, but anyways, I appreciate the conversation, you bringing this forward and everything you shared with us. Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
Thank you. I've had the privilege to be part of this joint jurisdiction establishment. Commissioner Schmidt and I both served a few years ago when this was brought up, and I'm very proud of the fact that we have this joint jurisdiction. But one thing I do have to stress that has become very evident in this joint area, if we're looking at rezoning and we now have to adhere to the city's plan, there's nobody to enforce it, inspect it, or assess it. So who's going to be watching this? So I think that is imperative that the city maybe look at that with their staff going forward with other ones that may come up, because if there is an issue, who's going to do it? It's out of our hands once it follows your plan. So I urge that caution moving forward. And I do concur that although there have been other rezones, I do not see how this meets the objective of our comprehensive plan, which is to maintain rural areas, which is agriculture, and only do rezonings when it was appropriate. And I don't believe that this follows the criteria. Although there are a lot of arguments why it should be, I still don't think it, in my mind, meets the objective, so, thank you.
Thank you. Any other joint members want to speak on this item?
Madam Chair, Councilor Kylie.
Go ahead.
Thank you. I think there's been a lot of good testimony and, of course, the analysis done by our city and county staff. I think it has brought me to the conclusion anyway that I do agree that the city and county commissions got this one right. I see no reason why I'm going to disagree with them. The leapfrog development is a concern of mine, does create added pressures to public safety and public works in terms of addressing these areas. For me, the drainage concerns, the stormwater runoff, especially from the addition of impervious services, surfaces is a concern of mine and how it will impact the surrounding property owners. The reports indicated there's limitations for septic tank, drain fields and homes with basements due to poor soils and on the high water table, which just can lead to other issues related to that. And this development, I believe, just would potentially lead to additional conflict between rural developments and our agricultural industry because, for instance, in this case, there's a concentrated animal feeding operation that's located on the adjacent 87 plus acre parcel just to the south and was indicated, you know, in, throughout the year, especially in the spring and in the fall when crops are put in and seeds put in and crops are harvested, there's going to be a lot of heavy equipment utilizing the roads, which just leads to more, the potential for conflict between these rural subdivisions and the existing ag operations, which I might add existed prior to development. So for that reason, I will oppose this particular item. Thank you.
Thank you, council member. Council member Brecky, did you want to say something?
Yeah, I would just add, I think all my fellow council members tonight, I, and commissioners, I had no predisposition on this when I came in. I really was open minded about it because we are in an affordable housing crisis or just a housing crisis. So it's certainly tempting to encourage people to build houses, even if it steps outside the boundaries a little bit. But at the end of the day, you know, following our plan really is important, our plan and the county's policies. So I appreciate everybody's, the questions and answers because it really is on the basis of all of your testimony that, you know, I made my decision, so I thank you for that. Like I said, we are in the middle of a housing crisis. I was looking at Councilors Jensen and Selberg, kind of waiting for them to bring that up, but I think in the questioning I saw that too. I mean, it's very tempting. It's just very tempting because it is, they are so close to these other two developments. It's just, I mean, I'm looking at the map in the corner here where it's just, it's just outside the development, but I also, you know, I'm persuaded by the fact that if we put in all these septic systems and then, you know, we annex it, then we're going to have, you know, then they're going to, you know, want to keep the septic systems and the conflict that we've caused ourselves doing that in the future. So, yeah, just, it's very close. That's all I could say. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? If not, I'd consider a motion to approve from the county.
I'll offer that motion so we can move.
Thank you. Is there a second? If there's no other motion to approve, I'd consider an alternate motion.
Go ahead. Madam Chair, I would so move.
Is that a motion to approve or a motion, what's your motion? So a new motion to deny. Is there a second?
I'll second it. Madam Chair, Gibbon.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? If not, with a clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Erns. Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landin?
Yes. The motion to deny has passed.
I have a motion from the city council side.
We always make our motions in the affirmative, so I'm going to make a motion to approve.
Second, Jensen.
Move my night cert second by Jensen to approve. Discussion? Seeing none, let's do a roll call vote.
Council members Brecky? No. Jensen?
No.
Kylie?
No.
Night cert?
No.
Selberg?
No.
Sale?
No. The motion is failed.
All right, so, sorry, sir. Although it might sound a little strange, your application was not approved. So that would move on to item two on our agenda. Could we read item two into the record, please?
Item two is deferred from the meeting of Tuesday, January 25, 2022, a resolution of the City of Sioux Falls approving the preliminary plan of Prairie Over Spring Creek addition. The Sioux Falls Planning Commission vote to recommend approval failed zero to seven. The Lincoln County Planning Commission vote to recommend approval failed zero to four. Private applicants, JSA, consulting engineers, land surveyors, John Dessent.
Thank you. The items representative like to come up and speak on the item? The items representative like to come up and speak on the item?
My name is Tom Winker, 308 West Lotta Street, Sioux Falls. Understand this part of the vote is procedural. I know it's going to be denied. So I'd like to just take a couple moments to thank the council members for everything that's been discussed here. Some good points were brought up, who's going to monitor that things are built the way they are. And the city has struggled with that in the city for the past 25 years that I've been developing and doing things. And I have pushed them for enforcement of all their grading. It's just a mess. So it is something that needs to be addressed. What I would do is have my engineers do an as-built after the fact to prove that it's done. The road that was mentioned would be built to county standards if it were approved. The demand that we're seeing, and this is a rural urban demand besides the shortage of houses everywhere, is so strong in all parts of the country that I think this area is a perfect area for what I'm going to call rural urban, where it's possibly never going to come into the city, always be county, but yet be populated a lot more than it is currently. Like I say, there's 19 developments in that area on this section of land. There's 67 homes already. And spreading those out over larger lots, if the city would get to develop those areas, think of areas like Riverview Heights over by the zoo, Old Apple Orchard. They've all incorporated into the city. They've subdivided the lots. Everything does work down the road. This area looks like it might be down the road 40, 50 years. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone in the audience have any questions or comments that they'd like to make? Do the joint members wish to speak to this item at all? If not, I'd ask for a motion to approve.
I'll try that one more time, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second it, Madam Chair, Gibbon.
Thank you. Any further discussion? If not, will the clerk call the roll, please?
Commissioner Erns.
No.
Commissioner Gibbon?
No.
Commissioner Poppins?
No.
Commissioner Schmidt?
No.
Commissioner Landine?
No. So.
Could I have a motion from the city council, please?
Move of approval?
Second, Jensen.
Moved by Selberg, second by Jensen. Discussion? Seeing none, could I have a roll?
Councilmember Brecky?
No.
Jensen?
No.
Kylie?
No.
Nightcert?
No.
Selberg?
No.
Sale?
No.
All right, I'd ask for a mo- to adjourn.
We have public comment.
Oh, I'm sorry. I missed that part. Public input, anybody in the audience or online or on, over that wants to come and present anything to the board? Yeah, it'll be limited to five. Just need you to come up and state your name and address, please. Good evening.
My name is Chad Bishop. I live at 7405 South Loansia Drive here in Sioux Falls, but in Lincoln County. Preface, one of my favorite quotes is from a letter from physicist Richard P. Feynman writing to a student who had found an error in his textbook. Says, "You should, in science, believe logic and arguments carefully drawn and not authorities." Now, he can say that. I would never say that. I would say you should always trust your authorities until they give you reason not to. I first spoke to this joint meeting of these two bodies on August 24th of last year. That statement and the 13 others to the city council are provided as a reference if you're curious. At that time, I was attempting to draw public attention to what I perceived was a false dichotomy, a false choice, a politically artificial division being crafted between the voluntarily vaccinated and the unvaccinated. There was a large and growing category that is not being acknowledged. It was the COVID-19 recovered. My family and I are in that group. My perspective is a bit different as no healthcare provider in the country will give me a flu shot. I had guinea brie as a child. So I look at this a little differently. That night when I spoke, the focus of my statement was on the use of serology to try to help folks discern their immune status, whether that be a panel of antibody tests or an adaptive T-cell response assay. For the past several months, the unvaccinated have been unwelcome in the cities of Minneapolis, Boston, Chicago, New York, LA, and our nation's capital. Enforcing mandates and vaccine credentials these cities deprive citizens of access to public services, restaurants, health clubs, education, regardless of whether they were antibody positive or not. For the prior year, we have been given a crash, for the prior year, we had been given a crash course of what it would take to achieve herd or community immunity. In the early days, before politicization, those who endured exposure and infection to help others and keep the country running were heroes. What happened? When it was announced in July of 2020, the Sanford Survive Study was reported to help us know more about their, being healthcare professionals, potential exposure to the virus, how their immune systems responded overall, more about the virus itself, so that we might all better understand COVID-19. Given its reported size and scope, it could prove to be one of the most important pieces of epidemiological work ever done in South Dakota, even though one year since the initial duration of the study has passed in July of 2021, the data and results have yet to be published. The way it was designed, it could tell us how many of Sanford's staff and the South Dakota healthcare professionals in general became SARS-CoV-2 antibody positive over the course of the year it was conducted. I know I would love to read it once it's published. It would be a feather in their cap, or perhaps Mr. Krabbenhoff's. Since August, we have had, we have discovered that the vaccines offered against the SARS-CoV-2 virus and the resulting COVID-19 infection do not confer sterilizing immunity, although they tried. It does not prevent infection. It does not prevent transmission. These alone effectively destroy any argument for any COVID-19 vaccine mandate. But there are more. The vaccines on offer do not confirm mucosal IgA immunity through an intramuscular injection into the arm, nor do they prevent the fully vaccinated from carrying a viral load equivalent to that of the unvaccinated. On January 19th, we get this tidbit from the CDC. A study, the results of which are summarized in this figure, demonstrates the efficacy of infection-induced immunity to exceed that of vaccination alone in terms of the risk of hospitalization. With that said, the vaccines do however reduce the risk of hospitalization and risk of death for those who are most at risk. Targeted protection of the elderly, the clinically obese, the diabetic, and the immunosuppressed has been and remains the right strategy, but Dr. Fauci smeared the fringe epidemiologists advocating for that policy as signatories to the Great Barrington Declaration. Fringe from Harvard, Oxford, and Stanford. On February 14th, in an article entitled COVID and Reinfections are Breakthroughs: Infections Take Big Jump in South Dakota, Mr. Ellis of the Argus Leader writes of the most recent wave, "But for serious outcomes, the numbers are likely closer to the mark, and they continue to demonstrate prior infection vaccines are reliable. Of the known breakthrough cases, only 4.5% resulted in hospitalization, and only 1.7% of reinfections result in hospitalization. The data for the Department of Health runs over 24 months." He is basing this assessment on the data he received from our own Department of, State Department of Health. I would like to now draw your attention to the op-ed in The Hill on February 17th, co-authored by the previous director of the CDC, Dr. Robert Redfield. Its title, "A Test to Determine COVID-19 Immunity Could Reshape U.S. Policy: Sounds Like a Good Idea."
Thank you. Anyone else wish to come up and speak? If not, I'd consider a motion to adjourn from the county.
I so move, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Sean, will you follow the roll, please?
Commissioner Erns.
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes.
A motion to adjourn from the city side, please.
Don't move. Jensen.
Second, Nightcert.
Moved in second and Jensen. Nightcert, roll call, please.
Councilmembers Brecky?
Yes.
Jensen?
Kylie? Yes.
Nightcert?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Meeting's adjourned.[1793.11]